Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Here.
And Trustee Bond?
Here.
And I'd like to ask the board to appoint a President Pro Temp.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, Trustee Lee.
Second.
Take the roll, please.
Okay. Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Heinz?
Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight our village president is on his way, he'll be here in about 10 minutes, say, so we're gonna kinda jump around here. We're gonna leave the swearing of the officers for the president, and I guess we could have public comments right now if anybody's got them. We'd like you to keep them close to two minutes. I'm not gonna cut you off, but I don't want you to repeat everything. So if somebody has any public comments, if they wanna step up to the podium, at this time, we allow you to speak. And seeing none, we will move on. Bob Weingart, he's the Director of the Oswego Senior Center regarding their programs and funding.
With the assistance of Mr. Zofel, your Administrator, last week, I asked him to pass a document to you that was purely one page. I've expanded that by a paragraph and given you an additional copy of it. This evening, there was a couple of things I wanted to add to it. We bring you greetings from your next-door neighbor in Oswego. We have a problem which I'm sure is not unique to either us as a senior center or as a function of a political jurisdiction, which it was when they created the Senior Advisory Committee in Oswego now almost 14 years ago. They got tired of, they figured out, when we started to have a requirement to move money around on a daily basis and needed $5 to make ice for the ice machine, that they got tired of being in the petty cash business and asked us to become a corporation and standalone entity on our own, which we did. We are now Oswigoland Seniors, Inc., a charitable nonprofit corporation in the state of Illinois and approved by the IRS. We're located at Old Trauber, for those of you who are familiar with Oswego, Old Trauber Junior High. We share the front facade with the YMCA, they're on the right-hand side, we're on the left-hand side, so we got the kiddies and the old folks in essentially the same facility. We serve about 1,000 of Oswigoland citizens each year with our various programs for a whopping total that's incredible to us. We live with it every day and review the numbers every day and can't believe it, with an incredible number of about 25,000 visits each year from residents of Oswego and Montgomery primarily. Those are the two biggest users of the senior center, but with input from throughout Kendall County. We touch on Will County, we touch on Kane County, and so we have lots of people that can come. We're using Older Americans Act money that comes from the federal government through the state of Illinois to us to do what is known as a Community Connection Center program and our Congregate Meals Program, or the Lunch Program, as everybody likes to refer to it in Oswego area. It's not truly a free lunch program in the sense that it needs to be self-regenerating through, we offer our guests, our diner guests, 110 or so each meal, twice a week, each week, the opportunity to make a voluntary contribution, and we've set a limit of not to exceed $5 per meal, and about 90 percent of the people that attend there do do that, so that it regenerates. All the money that it raises through the voluntary contributions go immediately back into the program. So our Lunch Program runs about $110,000 a year with the almost 11,000 meals we served in 2014. We have a total annual budget of somewhere between $3,000 and $310,000. You all know more about budgets than I'll ever know, I'm sure, but I can tell you this, we don't know exactly what things are gonna cost, we have to guess, like anybody else does. We can set salaries, we can set a whole lot of things, but if something breaks, we don't necessarily know what it's gonna cost to fix it. But allowing a little grace in our own estimates, we come up with an annual budget of about $310,000 a year. Last year, it turned out to be an actual of $296, or $295 and change. So that we're getting better at it the further along we go. The various funding agencies that fund us, Northeastern Illinois Area Agency on Aging, with its American, Older Americans Act money, funds our Meal Program and the Community Connection Center Program. They also fund part of our education programs, recreation, socialization, and health screening. It's all part of those 25,000 people that come to us for one reason or enough a year, or so a year. About 20 percent, total of 177 unduplicated individuals, come to us each year from Montgomery. Now, I have problems figuring out where the school district goes and who's in what school district and all of that. I also have problems trying to figure out, where's Montgomery? And where's Oswego? And where's that portion that's twixt and tween and ain't either one, but rather is the unincorporated area of Oswego Township that is sometimes Boulder Hill when it wants to be Montgomery or Oswego. It really gets to be pretty confusing. At any rate, we get 177 people from you, or roughly 20 percent of our total population comes from addresses that they consider and they list as Montgomery. We've been servicing your people all along. We never wanted to take fences and backyards and half-streets and say, "This is a boundary. If you live on that side of the street, you can't come to this senior center." That is so impractical, and that was never the intent of good effective use of Older Americans Act money in the first place anyway. So we don't turn people away. We do ask them to give us a little bit of information, not the kind that violates their privacy, and allows us to determine that they are either 60 or older, they're 80 or older, which is another dividing line, or they're 55 and older, depending upon whose money you're playing with and what program you're offering. So as you can see, this all gets pretty confusing. We also did not want to come here tonight and say to you, "Okay, we're having problems financially." The reason we're having problems financially is because the federal money took a little dive this year because the Northeastern Illinois Area Agency on Aging decided to move its boundaries and grabbed Kankakee County to go with the seven others that it had and drug it into the fold. But it didn't bother to drag any additional money into the fold, so it was those seven counties that are now eight that had to figure out how to divide up the money to fund mandatory programs for them as well. So we took a 15 percent cut in our funding, and since we already run real narrow, as you can tell, it doesn't take but one additional banger, and suddenly, we're in huge problems. And we said, "Okay, what are the kinds of things we can do?" Well, the kinds of things we can do is we can implement for all of our guests, the individuals who come, a voluntary contribution program. We initiated it, it's called the Oswego Senior Center Shine Program for 2015. We implemented it on the first of August, or first of November. We've already received a little over $5,000 in voluntary contributions. It is so outstanding, I can't hardly believe it. Get all emotional when I talk about it, but it's wonderful. It's working. We have approached the village of Oswego and asked them for a slight increase to the annual stipend that they provide for us. We know we're taking a 15 percent cut out of the federal money administered by the state, so that's a problem, and the Oswego Township, which is our, another funding organization, has indicated it will hold the line and not reduce our monies for this year. We don't know yet what the senior tax levy money will do to us this year from Kendall County, but we said, "Hey, we don't want it to be sour grapes. We don't wanna say we'd like you guys to make up for what we haven't charged you since 2007," which, by the way, would be a number that would choke a horse. This year alone, what we're providing for you is about $52,000 worth of services with the Lunch Program and with the other participation you're engaging in with our Community Connection Center programs. It would equal probably close to $500,000 if we said, "Hey, let's go back and start over." That's not the kind of reputation we wanna create with you. But we are trying to say to you, we think, if you share with us a vision that this is effective, it's working, it's doing good things for the people of the Oswigoland area, would you please consider maybe a number like, and we came up with this at a staff meeting out of a clear blue, but we know what Oswego gives us. If you're putting as many of your citizens into our program, not that you're intentionally inserting them, your people are using our program, if you would, and that's 20 percent of our total population Oswego, if you do 20 percent of what they pay, it would amount to about $7,750 a year, something like that, and I'd like to ask you to please consider allocating a number like that for us, and feel free to make it bigger. We would enjoy that very much. I'd be happy to field any of your questions, and I'm sorry, I probably took a little longer than two minutes.
I don't think anybody has any questions. I thank you for your presentation. The village does have our own program. Back in 2007, we had about 12 people who went to Oswigos, they had about 12 people that came to ours. That was many years ago before any of these programs expanded. We'll take this into consideration, the trustees. I sincerely trust that your figures are not even close on the 177. You're combining Boulder Hill, and that is just something, we do everything just for the village of Montgomery, no Boulder Hill people, and I think if you look at it, you're not even gonna be close in figures. I would like to know the numbers that are strictly residents of Montgomery, not the 177, 'cause I'm positive that's Boulder Hill, too. And we wouldn't even consider anything like that as far as not being residents, putting money into it. But we'll talk about it later, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you very much.
All right. And since our president is here, I'm gonna turn it back over to him.
Thank you, guys. Apologize to everybody for being a few minutes late this evening. Got stuck in traffic on 88. All right. With that, we'll move on to the Item B under Public Participation this evening, which is the swearing-in of Police Officer Michael McCullough. With that, I'll ask Deputy Chief Armando Sanders to give an introduction.
Good evening, Village President, Board members, staff, and guests. In attendance this evening, I'd like to introduce two of our new officers. I'll begin with Officer Michael McCullough. In attendance for Michael this evening is his father, Michael McCullough, Sr., mother Susan McCullough, brother Brian McCullough, who will be pinning on his badge this evening, girlfriend Megan Kelly, and friends Joshua and Amber Slaughter. A little bit of background on Michael. He went to Kimball High School in Royal Oak, Michigan, graduated in 2005, went to Wabonzi Community College, obtained his Associate's Degree in 2008, was in the Marine Corps Reserves from 2008 to 2014 with an Honorable Discharge as a Corporal. Some of his prior experience includes Police Cadet, Wabonzi Community College from 2007, 2010, Correctional Officer with the Illinois Department of Corrections, 2010 to 2014, was hired at the Montgomery Police Department in September of 2014, graduated the academy in December, and is currently in our Field Training Officer Program. He enjoys working out and reading, especially about military history. So at this time, I'd like to call up Village President Matt Broley to swear on Officer Michael McCullough.
All righty. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Michael James McCullough, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge, I'm sorry, and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
At this time, his brother will be pinning his badge on him. I don't know if everyone can tell, but can you tell that Michael was in the military? Michael's family wants to come up, we'll take a picture at this time.
It's the unofficial one. You guys get inside here, yeah? They'll just crop me and the chief out. They need to. Not essential. Don't worry about it. No, it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, I'd like to introduce our other new officer, Jason Frederick. In attendance this evening with Jason is his father, Tom, stepmother Janet, sister Katie, brother Jeremy, in-laws Kevin and Tammy, brother-in-law Kyle, grandmother Betty, and wife Courtney. Jason was a graduate of West Aurora High School, graduated in 2004. He also obtained his Associate's from Wabonzi Community College in 2008. He also was a member of the Marine Corps Reserves for six years with Honorable Discharge as the rank of Corporal. So Jason and Michael are familiar with each other. He was also a deputy with the Kane County Sheriff's from 2008 to 2013, hired at the Montgomery Police Department part-time in July of last year, and hired full-time in December of this year. Jason enjoys working out and traveling. His favorite locations are California and Hawaii, which I'm sure we would all appreciate being at now. Most importantly, Jason advised he was married August 1st of 2014 to his wife Courtney, who will pin his badge on shortly. This time, let Village President to swear on Officer Jason Frederick.
Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jason Thomas Frederick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully, or, and that I will support the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duty of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yes. His wife will be pinning his badge on now.
Congratulations.
At this time, his family wants to come down for pictures.
Oh, that's all right. That's all right. Don't worry about it. Awesome. Thank you.
You may need his votes someday.
Don't worry about it. They cropped him out. And again, congratulations to both of our new officers, and for all the police officers that are here today, there may or may not be a Pontiac G6 double parked in the parking lot.
I'm sure there is not.
There is not. At this time, we're gonna go off-script, actually, to do another recognition. This one is, no surprise, but this is to our outgoing clerk, so I'd see if that's okay.
Sir.
You wanna come up to the middle?
Because she's already of the stand.
We didn't tell you to. So on behalf of the village of Montgomery, we would like to present this to our outgoing clerk, Heidi J. Jeets. In grateful appreciation of three years of service, she was village clerk appointed in 2012 and elected in 2013, and we have several people here tonight that are taking notes that have applied to be the next village clerk. So certainly big shoes to fill, and I'm certain that some of the village board members here have things that they wanna add and certainly agree with me. So, thank you very much for your work.
It has been my pleasure, and hope whoever takes over, you bring goodies. It's a requirement now. I set the standard high.
Was that in the application process?
It wasn't. No, it wasn't. But they're all aware now.
Thank you, Heidi, for everything, for helping guide us.
As well. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. I'll read the items and then entertain a motion for approval. We have Executive Session Minutes of December 8th, Minutes of the Village Board Meeting of January 12th, Accounts Payable through January 22nd of 2015, Accounts Receivable Report for December, Appointment by the Village President of Tom Betsinger, 3153 Buchanan Lane, to Plan Commission for a term from February 1st, 2015, through January 31st, 2020, and then also Appointment of Tom Betsinger to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the same term. Item G, the Report of Closed Session Minutes, and then we have Ordinances 1650 and 1651.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yeah.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. We'll move on to Items for Separate Action.
If I may, President Broley, I was not at the meeting last Tuesday. I understand Items for Separate Action, Items A, B, C, D, and E, I have been updated, and I've watched the meetings, and I've been updated by various trustees and also village staff. I'm not going to make us discuss these again if it's simply for my benefit, unless Heidi wants me to do that for practice for the potential new clerks.
That's okay, we'll take a pass.
Okay. We'll go through them real quick, make a motion on each one, and just go ahead.
Certainly. All right, Item A, which is Ordinance 1655, which is actually modifying the Class G Liquor Light licenses in Montgomery, unless staff has anything further to add from what we talked about last week, or anybody else, we'll entertain a motion.
I have a question, actually, for probably Attorney Anderson. When I was reading through the ordinance, I'm just wondering what happens to a license holder if they don't meet the percentage, the 50%, who sells?
They'd be subject to revocation if they don't meet the requirements.
Is it an automatic?
No, no, it goes to the village president as liquor commissioner. But, but for the most part, if they don't meet the qualification, you would expect the revocation to occur.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no comments, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
I do want to say for those that are here this evening, for the next few items, I appreciate you guys working with us in the last few months. I know that we kind of held things up while we were trying to renew our liquor licenses from last year, and then I think take a good step towards the Class G liquor license moving forward. So I appreciate that. All right, move on to item B, which is ordinance 1635, which is amending the village code, increasing the Class G liquor license by one for two-play restaurant. And this was tabled from our October 27th meeting. I assume that staff doesn't have anything additional on this?
Unless there are questions.
If there are questions, we'll take them or a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yay.
And trustee Bond.
No.
That carries 5-1. Thank you. And then item C, which is ordinance 1656, we've been asked by the petitioner to hold off on that at this time. So if we do see that, it will be on a future meeting. Move on to item D, which is approval of the employee manual. We talked about this at great length at our last meeting and meetings prior to that. Justin, do you have anything else to offer on that? Again, if there are none, if you have comments or a motion.
We beat this like a dead horse and used enough paper to kill about 50 trees, so I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. Item E, water well number 15, pump and motor. This is task order number two. And with that, I'll ask Director Povens for a summary on this item.
Thank you, President Brawley. Your pack tonight is task order number two from Lane Christensen for the continued repairs on our well 15 pump and motor. As you recall, that was pulled due to some production issues that we were having. So as our practice, we'll, we get approval in stages as we do these projects. So they'd previously been approved to pull the pump and motor out of the ground and get it prepared to take to their shop. This is a continuation of that. So this task order will cover all the components of getting the equipment back to their shop, inspecting it, doing a, we'll do a tune-up on the motor, something we do every time we pull them out. We don't believe there's any major issues with the motor. It's just a preventative maintenance type of feature. The main feature on this will be doing some work on the column piping to improve the threading. And then, once all that work is done, they'll bring it back to the site and reinstall, test and disinfect. So this will be complete. So that task order is estimated at $64,123. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Director Povens? Hearing no questions, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Thank you.
That carries 6-0. Thanks. Last item for separate action this evening, which is award of a contract for Parkway turf restoration to Figgins Tree and Turf of Oswego. With that, I'll ask Director Povens for a summary on this one as well.
Matt, hold on a sec. Sorry, go ahead.
No problem. In your pack tonight is a recommendation to award a contract for Parkway turf restoration to Figgins Tree and Turf for $12,562.50. This will be the work to do turf restoration for 670 stump removals that we currently have out there. We didn't, the stumps were removed late in the year. We didn't have time in the season to do the restoration, so this is really just a continuation of that process. As you can see in the rest of your packet, we did request bids on this. We got three offers, two of them pretty close, one a little bit higher. We have worked with Figgins in the past. They do fine work. And we would, again, request approval. This work has a completion date of March, excuse me, May 15th. So this would be all the current unrestored stump areas, stump removal areas. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Other questions, Director Povens?
Yes. So this is to repair the turf where we ground out stumps?
Correct.
How does it weigh out versus replanting the tree? And then we wouldn't need to do the turf replacement? I'm guessing that it does, it's not an exact correlation, but...
Well, to plant a tree is $300. Just, just very simply stated, and there's more to it than that.
Okay.
But each site would be $300. So if there were 700 sites, 300 times 700...
It's a lot more money.
Yeah. My calculator in the head's not working right now.
That's why you...
$21,000?
Justin's already doing math. No, but I just wanted to double check.
Excuse me, $210,000. I dropped a zero there.
Yeah.
I thought we were off by a decimal, or zero.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I just was double checking to make sure that I was correct in my thinking there.
Can we replace trees in some of these areas then?
No.
No. Our arborist, Ed Pfaff, is here for the, something on it a little bit. I just asked Ed if we had replaced any trees in these areas, just under other programs, and he said, "No, we have not." So, these will be vacant Parkway spaces right now.
Not being a tree guy, but these, this is where the, this tree was, the stump is taken out and ground up, correct?
Exactly.
And they're going to fix the landscaping there. Are they ever going to plant a tree in that spot, though, in the near future, or not really? Or how'd you pick out?
Well, that depends on the board's decision on future budgets. So there's no, there's no imminent planting right now. We've used up our tree planting budget for the current fiscal year. So rather than leave these sites unrestored, we wanted to get topsoil and seed and fertilizer and erosion blanket on there and try to get turf reestablished. Now, we may come back, again, depending on how our budget discussions go, we may come back to some or all of these sites and eventually plant a tree. So it's not to say that these sites won't be disturbed again.
This work will be done by May 1st? May 15th?
15th.
Yeah, I just read it. I apologize.
May 15th. Thank you.
May 15th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. I think I had one question. Nope, go ahead.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
He got me all messed up. Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Abstain.
That carries five, and we had one abstention on that. Let the record show that as well. All right, with that, we'll move on to items for discussion. We have FY '16, it's the first time we've actually seen that on paper, which is kind of weird. Fiscal year '16 is coming up. FY '16 tree planting discussions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Povens.
Thank you, President Brawley. I'm here tonight with our village arborist, Ed Pfaff. This is a continuation of a conversation we started, if it was the last board meeting or the one before, regarding the advanced purchase of trees. We put together a brief slide presentation for you this evening. We're going to talk a little bit about the recent history of tree removals, and mainly to get to the point of how many in deficit we are. And then we've laid out some scenarios for future planting programs to set some, some targets at different rates and different timeframes. And then we'll end it up just by talking about what we feel the options are to discuss for the advanced purchasing idea. So I'm going to turn it over to Ed Pfaff, our village arborist. He's going to start out.
I think the remote's over there if you want it.
We're going to do without you.
I put it down.
It's the left and right area. Should be all set. All right, Ed is going to start us out, and then I'll come back in a little bit. There's a pointer here to Ed. I don't know if there's one on there. You all right? Okay.
Well, hello again. Showing up in the spring, I call in the spring to make it optimistic here. So I want to go over basically a little bit of history again, just an update of the emerald ash bore and what we've done so far, and then we'll go into the tree removals. We'll try to keep it a little bit short and to the point. So we'll get started here. All right, on the tree removals this year, we had removed 744 trees this summer, and I have it split down into the different areas that, the causes of removal. And the main things to look at is that we have 84% of the trees that were removed were again removed due to damage from the emerald ash bore. And then the other one that's of note is the 12%, which is due to death by other causes, which would be other tree diseases or insects for the most part. We had some removed from storm damage, auto accidents, vandalism. So those are the areas, the reasons the trees were removed. One thing that's good, there's some good news here, in a way. The ash tree removals, you can see the history of them there, starting out in 2010 with 90, and then I believe that we are peaked for a single-year removal this year at 625. And I believe that the amounts of removal will start to drop off significantly. And part of the reason for this is there aren't that many ash trees left. Currently, we have around 974, 975 ash trees left in the parkways. We've already removed 1,330 ash trees. So another change is that the trees that are remaining primarily are white ash, and white ash are a little bit more resistant to the emerald ash bore, so they die more slowly. And there's also, I believe, a preference of the ash bore to go to the green ash. So those were hit very hard and heavy real quick, but now they'll start to switch to the white ash. I do believe that I will end up needing to be removed, other than the ones that some of the residents have chosen to treat. If they maintain treatment, the trees will not be removed. Let me go place there. The majority of the trees that we, were removed by public works, and we removed 98% of the trees in-house. And that was due to the use of equipment that we got, the bucket truck in use and the new chipper, and then the training and stuff that we've had with some of the guys and that too. So I did get an estimate from JPCI, gave them all the size of the trees that we had removed ourselves, and just asked them if he would quote it to us, what the value of that would be if he were to do it himself. And he's consistently been our lowest bidder, and he came up with $75,700. So that's the amount that we were able to offset by having the equipment to do some of the work ourselves. Here, we're looking at the tree replacement history, and this goes back to 2008, which is the first that I have any numbers for. And at that time, we'd replaced 15 trees throughout the whole village that year. And the numbers have been increasing some. The pinkish or red line down on the bottom is a reflection of years that we've had grant money or also the donated tree participants in there with those numbers. So it kind of follows the, the overall number of planting trends. We did have a pretty good participation in the tree donation program this year, with a few individual residents donating, and then also the Fairfield Homeowners Association had some money that they reactivated. And with that donation money, I believe we ended up planting another, combined with our portion, another 32 trees. Some of those trees were in new sites. You might have seen them on the median and garden. And then some of the sites along the parks and areas that we're not putting a priority on, because we, we are prioritizing planting trees back in front of residents' homes first. And then we're going to fill in the other areas at a later date. So the problem that we have right now is we have 1,100 trees that were removed that have not been replanted to this date. And here we have a couple, just pictures of some of the streets. And the distribution problem is one of the things where you end up with a lot of ash trees in a row, so you have full blocks that don't have any trees left on them. So it's not like it's a tree here and there. It's like some pretty big gaps. And so it's changing the way the village looks. I kind of put together some timelines that we could do for tree replacements, and I have to look, I can't see that too well, so hopefully you can see it. The top line, the red line up there is the, the trend if we don't do any replacements at all, and you can just see it, it just continues to climb. This goes out 26 years for the replacements on here. And what I did, I did estimates of the removals. The next two years, I'm estimating that because of the ash bore numbers, ash tree numbers that are still going to be coming out, I'm figuring an estimate of 500 trees for the next two years. And then we'll start to decline back to what would be a normal rate, which is probably going to be around 25 trees per year. And that, of course, is going to be affected by whether you have, you know, storm damage or whatever. The orange line would represent planting 100 trees per year. If we do that, then it's going to take us 26 years to get back to a 95% of the original tree population in the village. And that's the, that's what all these, we headed towards, is that 95% replacement. And I chose that because there are a number of trees that were improperly sited, too close to utilities or too close to stop signs corners, that we will not be replacing. So, okay, so if we're looking at the blue line, we're looking at planting 150 trees per year, which is pretty close to our current rate of replacement. That puts us out to 16 years, which doesn't sound like it's all that long, but if your kid is going into first grade, he'll be getting out of college at the time that you replace 95% of the trees that were removed since the time he was about two years old. So, so then we go to 200 trees a year. That brings it down 11 years. And then if you went with 300 trees a year, it's seven years. And that's, the seven years gets you back down to that 95%. Then you're going to have that normal maintenance rate of, you know, 25 to 30 trees a year from that point forward. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. We had talked, or you had talked a little bit earlier about possibility of doing some early purchasing, or it's an idea that we have, if we could get some funds approved a little bit earlier. It could offset the effects of some replacement cost trends, with the prices going up higher and shortages. One of the problems we have with, for the tree side of things, being our budget is approved in May, a lot of the trees that I would like to purchase, we can't get anymore because they have to know ahead of time to dig the trees, because it's time-specific to the type of tree for the surviving, survivability of the tree. So a lot of the trees that we're trying to get for diversification, the oak trees and some of that have to be dug in the spring, early. And we've been missing the window for getting the trees dug. So then we end up trying to find people that have dug extra trees, extra oak trees, have them in storage, but it's hard to get a good price on those because they only dig so much. so many that they know they're going to sell anyway. So it's not like it's a real bargaining point. So the trends on the tree purchases the last few years, tree prices have been going up about 10 to 14% per year. And the, this year, the Ornamental Tree Grower Association came out and they said that to expect that tree prices are going to start to climb pretty regular now, and 20% this year, and they figure that trend will continue the next several years. There are tree shortages because when the economy crashed and the building all slowed down, a lot of the nurseries stopped planting, and a lot of them went out of business. And then the people that supply liners to them, it all went down the line. So there's, the liners are the small trees that they send to the nurseries to plant, to grow up, that they sell to us. So it's all the way down the line that the production's been cut. And it's not like they're living things and they take a certain amount of time to grow. You can't just stamp out a bunch more trees. So it's going to be quite a bit of delay right now for the production to get cut off with the, the demand. So on that. The other thing to consider is that creating a diversified forest is the best management practice. And we're trying to get more varieties of trees in so that if another pest comes in, we don't lose as many trees at one time. We're hoping that it'll be split up a little bit more. And like for now, we already have around 30, a little over 30% of our trees in the parkways are maple trees. So if we were to have something come in now to wipe out the maple trees, we'd be losing another about 3,000 trees. So we're trying to split up and get more varieties in. But by doing that, the varieties that we don't have are the varieties that tend to cost more money. Like ginkgos cost 25% more than maples generally, oaks about 20%. Some of the other trees about 15% more than the standard trees that we already have a fair amount of. I'm still planting some maples. I'm still planting some of the other varieties that don't cost as much to offset the overall cost of our tree planting. And I'm trying to place those trees in areas where it's still going to create diversity on that street or on that section of town. But it's, it's not like we're going to be able to go get a bunch of really cheap trees because the trees that we're looking at to get for diversity, all the towns are looking at getting those for diversity too, because they've all had the same problems in the past. So, so with that, I believe we'll turn it over to Mike and he'll go through the next.
Ed, I have one question. On one of the slides, there was 45 trees were done through the donation program?
Yes.
And you mentioned that Fairfield Way donated 32 trees?
Yes.
So we only had 13 residents participate in the program?
Our actual number of residents was probably a little bit less, but the number of trees, some of them donated 13 trees, not 13, sorry, three trees.
Three trees.
Some got two trees, some got one tree.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think a lot of people are still interested. A lot of people are.
They're waiting.
They're waiting to see what's going to happen. And I do, I have to say, when we did the, the tree planting on Fairfield Way down the median, there was, everybody that was coming in was happy. They were giving us thumbs up, stopping and thanking us. And it's really, you know, the, the residents of Fairfield that caused that to happen. So they should be congratulated on that part. And most residents do expect some sort of help from the village to get trees planted. And most people want them back. People are pretty attracted to having the trees when they bought their house, and now the trees are gone and, you know, they feel shorted. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Just got a couple more slides here. So what I was going to talk about was just some of the numbers. You saw and heard Ed's calculations on the, you know, basically six different options. Of course, you could do any number of varieties to shorten or lengthen that timeframe to replace, to get us to 95 level. But if we went with the seven-year program, that was the shortest of the programs, that would be 300 trees per year. We predict that'll cost us $90,000 for tree planting. And again, that does 300 trees over a seven-year time span. Just to show you the cost, here's what we're using, $165 per tree average purchase price that takes into account the diversity and the scarcity that we, the diversity that we desire, the scarcity that we think we're going to see. Then planting costs, 135, that's based on recent bids. That'll likely change or can go up, assuming it's going to go up a little bit as we progress. So if we look at that scenario, the 300 trees, and we want to talk about early approval, if we took half of that, 50% of that, 150 trees for consideration for advanced purchase authority, that would put us at 165 per tree, 150 trees, 24,750 approximately. Again, the, you know, changing the number of the different varieties of trees is going to change that price. If we commit to that on an early authorization though, please know we're also then committing to planting those trees, which would be another $135. So that'd be a $20,000, $200, $250 commitment for a total commitment of $45,000. So again, just using that scenario, half of the 300 for advanced purchase by the other ones later, would be a $45,000 budget commitment that you'd be making. So just for some perspective, last year in FY15, our total purchase and planting costs were about $42,000. So 150 trees this year would be just slightly higher, but almost equivalent to what we did last year. Again, that's not to say that is the number we need to advance purchase. That's really just to give you some perspective on, on budgets. I don't have a slide prepared for this, but we started this conversation with a discussion of the upcoming trade show that Trustee Younger mentioned. That's the Illinois-Wisconsin Landscape Show. It's coming up in Schaumburg, Illinois. That's at the end of February. So what I would propose tonight, we've put a lot of numbers out, but we do have a few weeks yet, I think, before we have to make an absolute decision. And working with Administrator Zoflin, Finance Director Van Voren, we've agreed that'll all give time for presentation of other budget requests. And as you can imagine, there's going to be a lot of competing requests for limited funds. So of course, you're free to choose as you wish, but we do have some time. We don't have to decide tonight on advanced purchasing at all, or if you want to do that, how much it would be. At some point in the budget process, Ed and I will come back and ask you for advanced purchase authority of whatever budget number you've arrived at, just to address that idea that there are trees that we need to purchase early to ensure that we get them, or if we feel there's going to be a scarcity of a particular tree, we would want to purchase those early. So if we defi, you know, decide on $1,000, we will probably ask you for the authority to use that before the budget's formally adopted in mid-April. So with that, just one more slide we put together, again, truly to give you some perspective for, on the scope of what the, the Public Works request is for the tree program. We have a variety of other functions, the primary functions. We do contracted tree removal, stump grinding and restoration, large tree pruning and pesticide treatments. Our budget requests for those are $67,600. We've also requested some equipment purchases totaling $5,500. That'll give us a scoop and an auger for the skid steer that we currently have, and will allow us to do more planting. For reference, that $5,500 divided by the cost of planting is about 40 trees. So it's relatively short payback period if you consider savings in one area to offset the cost of that. But again, those are just to give you some ideas, scope of the requests. And again, as you all know, there's a lot of challenges with deciding what to fund and not to fund. So with that, I'd open it up for questions.
Thanks, sir. Questions?
I think this is one of those items that it's just going to get more expensive the longer that we wait. I wouldn't be opposed to finding some sort of funding source, or I know that Trustee Bond had mentioned the gambling revenues and trying to get us closer to that 300 per year dollar amount. I know this is a hot topic with a lot of homeowners, especially if the, the trees in front of their homes were, were cut down, through no fault of the village obviously, but still they, they feel like they should be replaced. You know, what we're seeing as far as where I work, we're going through the same thing. Plant prices are going up. They're going to continue to go up for the next three, four, five years until the, the trees that they're planting now are, are big enough to where they can actually begin to sell them. Now we just got to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
And that's why, as Director Poobens and I discussed it today, our recommendation is you guys take some time to think about it. Before the trade show happens, the general fund budget in its entirety will come to you so that you're not trying to make this decision in a vacuum. You can see what other items are out there being requested and weigh that then on what that, you know, tree budget's going to be and how much of that you'd like to do as, you know, maybe approved for early funding. So we should figure that'll let you make the, the most informed decision.
I appreciate Ed bringing the auger and some of these other things, because that would save us from contracting out and we could attach that. I think that's a good idea. Right.
I would say this does feel a little bit like the cart before the horse. We haven't seen the budget and how everything's going to shake out. I would agree that if we could find a way to earmark the video gaming revenues towards this, but that's looking at it in a vacuum. Our sales tax receipts are underperforming this year. We've frozen the levy the last two years, so we're actually putting that downward pressure on our staff. And the unpopular thing that I'm about to say is that tree replacement, to me, is a second-tier problem. We have, we have other needs and wants that might, that we might feel is more appropriate when we see the budget, that we need police officers, that we need staff, that we need equipment and vehicles. So I would like to see us promote that tree replacement program. And I, I guess one of the things that's left out of this presentation that we don't know is if we were to do this advanced purchase, what would the ultimate savings be? If it's a 10% savings, we're saving $4,500. That's, that's real money. But we don't know that for sure. I mean, we think that it's going to increase, and it probably will. And if there was anything that you guys were going to purchase that was, let's say, $45,000, that maybe you could push off to next year, and so we'll get.
Nope, talk to the police.
They were all just here, so. Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. It'd be nice to see Ed every now and again with some good information, but. That's true. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it.
I think it's good information too. I agree with Matt. Everybody's jumping up and down that our gas prices are going down, down. But at the same time, that takes our percentage out too, which knocks the budget pretty good.
Certainly. All right, move on to item B, which is increase in fines for ordinance violations. This was a discussion that we tabled from last week. We felt that it was important that Trustee Youngerman be here. He's the one that asked to put this on the agenda. So with that, I will turn it over to Steve for his comments.
The reason I had brought this up, there, there were specifically certain fines that I, we were looking at as far as parking on the street during a two-inch snow removal, parking over the sidewalk, and also noise. I had put some information out on Facebook. I wanted some feedback into some of the HOAs and, and certain pages, and I got a lot of feedback. And it seems like there's a problem. There, there are certain individuals park on the sidewalks, or park in the streets during a snow removal. They don't move their vehicles. They're not getting, they're not understanding. And quite honestly, a $25 ticket is laughable for parking over the, for parking on the street. The problem lies when they have to move their vehicles from the street into their driveway, but then they overhang the sidewalk. Well, right now, as the ordinances are written, you can't park on the street during a two-inch snow removal. You can't park over the sidewalk ever. But during the winter, we have to set a priority. And it, I would say that the priority is for us to clean our streets, get the snow removal off, get the snow removed off the streets, maybe put a moratorium or some sort of certain time period where we're not ticketing for the sidewalk during the snow removal. If we get a, say we got a snow tonight, maybe it's three or four days where, yes, they can park in their, in their driveway, which allows us to get the streets cleaned. Once that three or four days passes, okay, get your cars back into the street if you're going to park in the street. And the sidewalk thing, I'm not as concerned about during the winter. It, it's when we have, when it's the spring and summer and fall, when we have families out, when people are trying to take walks, when you have kids riding bicycles, and you have a vehicle parked in the middle of the sidewalk, which then sometimes the, whoever's walking or whoever's riding their bike or whatever, is now forced into the street to get around that vehicle. And one of the issues, it, it's, the sidewalk ordinance, yes, we have it in place, but it's not necessarily enforced. And it's, should it be enforced? You know, if we pick this Tuesday and we're going to enforce it, and we don't enforce it on Thursday, then we're sending a mixed message to the residents. But the, the $25 ticket, especially for like snow, it doesn't, doesn't do anything. As far as the noise, I've talked to some of my police officer friends and.
Can we, can we discuss the first two before you move on to the next?
Sure, sure.
I, I would just like to ask, I'm pretty sure I know the answers to this, to the chief and the deputy chief. When it comes to the sidewalks, my feeling is it's a judgment call of the officer. If it's a short driveway and somebody's hanging over the driveway because that's where they have to park, I don't think they should be getting a ticket. Is that, I mean, basically, you're not telling people, go out, or you're not telling your officers, go out and ticket everyone who's hanging over the, the sidewalk.
Are you, during the seasonal, during a snowstorm or?
I'm just saying, anytime. I mean, if somebody has a shortened driveway where if they park in their driveway, they are now over the sidewalk, I, I would think that would be more, if I was that person, I'd be getting annoyed if I was getting tickets, because now I can no longer park in my driveway. But then you're saying when there's two inches of snow, I can't park on the street either, so I'm going to get a ticket either way. So I'm, I'm thinking that it's strictly a judgment call when the officers see that.
Well, and, and that's, you know, I have 30-some officers, and that's very hard to, to leave it like that. It, it has to be pretty much black and white. Either we allow parking over the sidewalk or we don't. It, it's hard to keep track of that. We don't issue tickets when there's a snowstorm because we want cars to be parked up in the driveway. But I agree with Trustee Youngerman, as soon as that street, the ordinance says, as soon as the street is cleared from curb to curb, then you can park back in the street.
Right.
Once that's clear and clean, they should be back in the street. They shouldn't be parked over the sidewalk, unless you want to change that.
But to play devil's advocate, I walk my neighborhood five nights a week. I'm constantly walking around cars. I don't see officers driving down the street and giving tickets to those cars on a June evening. evening just to write the ticket. So it is a judgment call because if a squad car drives past the street and they see it, they should be stopping and writing a ticket, according to what you're saying, black and white. They see it, stop and write a ticket. And I don't think that's happening.
Well, I didn't mean, what I meant was it's black and white in the ordinance. Either you can park on the sidewalk or you can't. I'm not talking about enforcement.
Okay. Because then that's a judgment call.
Because if the neighbor calls and says, "My neighbor's parking over the sidewalk," we respond out there, we'll issue a ticket.
That's what I was going to say, it's more complaint...
Driven.
Driven. I mean, it was just back in, when we started this, as far back as I remember, it was because somebody could not walk in the summer. We didn't care about the winter because we didn't want them out in the street. But in the summer, they had to go out in the street, push their baby buggy around the car that habitually parked there, and then they complained, and that's when the guy got the ticket.
Correct. And kids on bicycles, we were having young kids having to go out in the street around cars. It's not safe.
We had that, I remember this came up maybe two or three years ago, pretty, I think there was three instances that we had, or a multitude of instances, back-to-back-to-back where people were parked over the sidewalk. And that's, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why we have that ordinance is to protect people while they're on the sidewalk. We don't want to encourage people to leave the sidewalk, enter into the path of travel in the road, and then go back. So that's why we have that. I do think that it probably makes sense for this board to clarify the ordinance and say that if there is two inches of snowfall, as determined by the chief, and they're issuing tickets for that, then the parking on the sidewalk is void during that time period. Because I think in practice, you're not going to have during a two-inch snowfall, you're not going to have people using the sidewalk. And if they are out walking, they're just walking, and there is no sidewalk. It's all snow. So maybe we need to clarify that. But the other aspect of that is enforcement. If we have an ordinance on the books that we all feel is important for us to have, then it should be enforced. And while that might be very unpopular, if somebody is parking over the sidewalk and it's a danger to everybody, then they should receive a ticket. And I was going to ask our attorney if our code enforcement individuals can give these types of tickets. Does it have to be a sworn officer?
No, it could be the code enforcement if you determine that to be the case.
The other question I was going to ask was process for this, because we're kind of getting way off topic on three huge issues. The question that was raised was tickets and the SCOP laws, the people who repeatedly park over the sidewalk, let's say, or park on the street during a two-inch snowfall. How do we handle that in court? I mean, do we issue a ticket for $25 and then go from there?
You want me to handle that, Dan?
Or the chief can take...
Pardon me? You want me to answer?
I was asking you, who do you want to handle it, me or you?
You know, I can answer that. They have seven days to pay the ticket, and then it goes up to $50. And after that, if they don't pay, then we send it to court. And then Attorney Anderson's firm handles it from that point on.
Okay.
Is there any way? Well, go ahead, Matt, because I'm probably going to the same question you're going to.
Okay. My question is, if there are individuals that repeatedly violate these types of, these two different ordinances, or any of the three, really, how do we track that? Is there a way for us to track that and say, because I believe that we have the lowest that we can go with the ticket per hour ordinance is $25. The highest is...
$750.
$750, which is not laughable. So how do we, in practice, how do we do that, going from 25 and on up?
If we determine that we have a repeat offender, we can issue a notice to appear and send them straight to court. And then the fine, the maximum fine is $750.
The point that I'm trying to make on this is that, well, I agree the $25 ticket is not huge. We want compliance. We want people off the street or off the sidewalk. And if they don't in the first, second, or third time, we would or could issue them a notice to appear in court. And then it's not a laughable situation. You're trying to, you are willingly and knowingly violating an ordinance, and we take you to court on it.
Now, my question is, Matt's point was, do we know? So... Armando drives past and writes him a ticket for being in the street. Three days later, you're on shift, you drive past. Do you know that Armando wrote him a ticket for three days ago? How does the officer know that it's a repeat offender? How are we going to, how does that process work?
The officer wouldn't. It would be up to our records people to be able to keep track of that. We discussed that once this came up here a few months ago, so we'll be able to track that. But not necessarily like in a computer punching your name or anything.
So when the officer writes the ticket, do they write a dollar amount down there?
They do.
But they won't know. So you're going to write a $25 ticket, he's going to write a $25 ticket.
And then that, then your third time, now that becomes a habitual or a problem, now it becomes a notice to appear and we'll go to court. Because that's, they are laughing at that point.
But the third officer doesn't necessarily know that the first two incidents have happened. It happens at records. So when they stick that third ticket on your car, it's still going to say $25.
Yeah, and then records will, the administrative sergeant or deputy chief or I will find out about it, and then we'll take further action.
Okay. That's my question.
Sure.
How does that work? Because I'm going to get a $25 ticket on day three, and all of a sudden, you're going to call me and tell me I owe $750. And I'm going to say, "Well, no, I have a $25 ticket. I'm coming in to pay it." So that's why I want to make sure the process is in place.
Sure.
The question I was asking Attorney Anderson was, the officer writes the ticket for the third time, it goes to records, you guys are now aware of it. How does that process go to court? Does it automatically now go to court? Or how's that work?
We, you have two sections to your code. One is section 1-8, and the other is 1-10. 1-8 is the original version of all your fines and ordinances, which basically say, at any time an officer observes a violation, he can issue a ticket. We call it a notice to appear, or NTA. And then that goes to court. The court has the authority to impose a fine anywhere from $0 to $750 that we talked about. So they could do that at any time. Section 110 is what we created, which is the voluntary compliance section, which is these 25, 50, $7,500 tickets by category and by classification. Those are characterized as voluntary precourt settlements. In other words, that's an agreement between the village and the offender not to go further into court. So at any time, if the police department determined that they wanted to upgrade a ticket, if you will, to a notice to appear, they have that authority to do so. So pretty much at any time that the chief, deputy chief, or the staff determine that it's appropriate, they have that authority.
Could the language of the ticket itself say, on the third fence or some language, this may turn into a notice to appear, it's not just a $25 ticket anymore?
It could.
Kind of use that device to educate people as they move through the process?
It could.
Like I said previously, my goal is not to make money from this. It's to get people parked where they should and where they should not be for the safety of, you know, a lot of people think, oh, because it's winter, it's automatically snow and parking over the sidewalk and getting your street off, you're getting your car off the street. There's three other times of year when there is no snow, but it's still occurring, and that's what we need to work on. I had mentioned possibly raising the fines in my discussions. You know, I had said, okay, maybe $100 or something like that. It seemed like a lot of the people that I had talked to were fine with the $100 as far as the snow, parking on the street during the snow. They didn't want to see it go to 100 for parking over the sidewalk. And I wouldn't want to see it go to 100 either. But, you know, I'm open to the option of raising the snow ordinance ticket to 100 and raising the parking over the sidewalk ticket to 50. And noise, the noise ordinance, as far as the fine, when I had parties when I was in school, if a police officer came up and gave me a $25 noise ordinance ticket, we'd turn it down while he was there. As soon as he left, we'd laugh, take up a collection, and turn it back up. Because $25 is not getting it.
That's Ohio State people.
We won the national championship.
Thank you, Trustee Lee. I appreciate that clarification.
Awesome.
I wouldn't, I still have trouble, the 25, I think, is fine for the first time. I agree with you. The second time, the guy should be, it's a wake-up call for him. But to have somebody like you say, come over to your house and had a party and stay over and leave his car out there and get a $100 ticket, he's going to be in shock because he probably didn't even know about it. That's the only, once you get to 25, I can understand, you know it, you better not do it again. But for that first time, there's so many people, I think you can ask residents, and a lot of them don't even know that they can't do it.
I mean, how would we do a stepped fine process? And from what I'm hearing, if the code enforcement officer could write it during the day, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so we wouldn't be tying up our police department with writing that type of ticket? Go ahead, Pete.
We've had that incident out in Parkview. But they give you a warning first, because all residents don't know what this is. They don't have that book at home to tell you what the police officer should give them a warning. If it happens again, you're going to get a ticket. Just have them move it. But automatically give them a ticket. And if he don't know what the ordinance is, I don't think that's right.
I received the wake-up call ticket for parking in front of my house during a two-inch snowfall, and it's never happened again. I backed it out, put it on the street to shovel my driveway clear. My wife said lunch was ready. I went in, had lunch, came out, and it was a $25 lunch. The frozen pizza wasn't that good.
We have signs, Public Works, every early fall, post signs about the, at many locations. It's in the water bill several times over the last several years, many years. I think that if you're a resident, you need to know about it. You need to know what the rules are. I'm all for increasing the fines, but you have to remember that if there's a death in the family and you have 15 people over, or it's a graduation party, or, you know, it's not, it's okay for your 21-year-old to have a party and you hammer those kids, or there's a death in the family and you have out-of-state people and you're hammering them. We can't, we don't work like that. It has to be one way or the other. I think that we have a review process, administrative review process right now in place. If someone wants to come in and challenge it, we fill out this form, and we send it to a sergeant, and they sit down with the resident and discuss it. Most of the time, we'll work out an arrangement. If it's, for an example, we had a person deploy to Iraq and put his car in the street, and he was gone for 90 days. So, and the snow fell. So we nollyprost that ticket, but he also knows that he can't do that again. So I'm up for changing, and we might as well throw fireworks complaint in this mix. If we're going to make a change, if we're going to ask the attorneys to rewrite our local ordinance on the fines, we might as well do fireworks at the same time.
I would agree, because there were some moms who had made mention to me about that ordinance on Facebook as far as the fireworks waking their sleeping children. I don't know if you'd really want to mess with the mom after you woke up her kids.
But now fireworks is a little different because our officers must either have a witness to the offender to be able to identify the suspect to go to court. So it's a lot trickier than just having a car parked over the sidewalk or a car parked on the curb.
All right. So that's a fourth topic, fireworks, then. Are there any ordinances that we currently have that you guys don't want to raise the fees for?
I'm happy with those four.
I worry that we want compliance. We want people to comply for the safety of our village. We don't want to overcharge our residents. We want, it sounds like we actually have a problem with enforcement. If we have people parked over the sidewalk, village staff has probably greater priorities to work on at that time, otherwise they would enforce the ordinance as it's written, so...
And that would be my point, too. Do we want officers driving up and down the street ticketing cars parked over the sidewalk, or do we want them patrolling and nabbing people who are speeding or driving recklessly?
But the code enforcement officer solves that.
I suppose, I don't know that I want the code enforcement officer out there all day, every day, looking for people driving over the sidewalk. I think there's other things that he can be doing.
Enforcing codes.
Right.
Well, isn't parking over the sidewalk a code?
Not necessarily driving up and down the street looking for people parked over the sidewalk.
I think it's still complaint-oriented. Most of the time it is.
And that's, that was my point about the snowfall, is if the only time this ordinance is being enforced, and the reality is, it's being enforced when there's a complaint. Does anybody in the room complain if your neighbor parks over the sidewalk during a snowfall? Probably not. I would think you haven't written very many tickets for parking over the sidewalk during a snowfall.
Great. I'm glad you asked me. That's zero.
Yes.
Since the snow season started and really effectively January 1st, because we didn't have, I believe there was no recordable snow in December, little. So we've issued 38 tickets this snow season, so that's not...
For parking in the street.
Correct. But we don't just ticket and run, though. We...
Knock on the door, I think.
Yeah, we knock on the door. If they're home, they'll come out and move it. If they're not home, we issue a ticket. And you asked how the next officer, that officer is, that car gets tagged in the computer system, and within 24 hours, he'll, he or another person will go back and check it to make sure it's gone. And we work closely with Public Works, too, for that.
Okay.
Most, one last thing. Most of our sidewalk violations, our code enforcement officer works, I believe, 7:00 to 3:30. So those violations aren't usually during the day. They're at night when people come back home from work. So my midnight shift, when it's 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning and it's quiet, you'll see them issue tickets for that then. Not too often do you see a day car writing that ticket because they're on, they're busy and doing other things.
And there's fewer cars over the sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay. Without putting any words in anybody's mouth, it does not sound like the majority wants to increase the fines for two-inch snowfall or parking over the sidewalk at this time. Denny said it seems good. Teresa, it seems good. I would like to keep it.
I'd like to raise it.
I'm good with it. Where's that? I'd like to see some escalation for repeat offenders, but I think you look at that on an individual basis because I don't think it's a rampant problem. I think it's a, it's an individual.
That's still raising the fines, though.
Well, that's, it's actually currently allowed by ordinance to go from 25 up to whatever you can get in court, pretty much. Yeah. Okay. All right. Let's move on really quick to the noise, and then we'll move on to fireworks.
I think it's too low. I think... $25 for a noise violation is too low.
Chief, what's the ballpark of the ticket you're writing for noise ordinance violations?
The noise ordinance violation tickets are very few. We do have habitual people who play their music loud in the spring and summer and fall. Not too many calls for loud music during the wintertime, very rarely. The, usually when the officers, for noise, we have a noise meter, and you have to go to the complainant's edge of their property and use the sound meter. And if it's a, we have to follow our ordinance on noise, which we've done for years, years and years ago, we did a lot of research on that, and it's a solid ordinance. We have a very solid noise ordinance. We have a very solid noise ordinance. It doesn't happen too often. If people are uncooperative, they get a notice to appear right there and they go to court.
So again, the fine isn't limited to $25 at that point. It could be $250.
Correct. Fines are usually up to the judge in court.
Do we need more of those devices? Or is there enough to effectively cover the squads?
Yes. Yeah, we have two, I believe. Well, we're fine with two.
How many noise ordinance violations do we have that we're having this conversation about raising a fine on?
Well, I just answered, Trustee Spurling, not very many.
Yeah.
So I will report back on the number, but it's not, not very many.
If I could just say a few points real quick, because I know we're talking about a couple of different things. But first and foremost is we try to educate the, our residents on what the ordinances are. So again, the water bill, the websites and all that. The enforcement, as the chief mentioned, that's a tough call. It's not always just, well, he got an exception, because I can tell you, as reviewing these compliance tickets, everyone doesn't know. I didn't know that was a law. I didn't know I couldn't do that, okay? You don't know how many times an officer has actually verbally warned them. So you're right. So if I'm driving around, hey, listen, you need to move your car. A lot of this is complaint-driven. So the guys aren't running around looking for cars over sidewalks. If code enforcement does that, we are gonna get the compliance ticket review process now to us on something we, I can't, I'm gonna have to call and say, how come you wrote this guy? Because usually that's what happens is, well, did you know his car was parked over the street and his car? So it's a tough situation, but I think, once you educate the public, enforcement is necessary. But the other thing, too, I know Stan mentioned, like, can you put on the ticket three times and you could go to court? I agree with that. However, I would caution that that doesn't mean they can't go on the first time. Again, if I've warned someone verbally, and this is the third time I'm there, I'm not gonna waste my time with a $25 ticket. So I wouldn't want to take that. Some people will say, well, it says up to three. Well, it can go on number one. And the other part is, you know, the attorney's recommendation, because I can, if we start hammering people and then Steve's like, well, okay, I'm going in front of the judge again with another parking over the sidewalk, he'll be able to tell us, well, these are gonna, the direction we need to go with that. So that's gonna be a key point in there to know what our village attorney recommends by what the judge is gonna say on these types of violations.
From what I'm hearing, you can write the ticket for $500. When it goes before the judge, he can tell them it's 75.
We don't write them with a dollar amount. The penalty is $0 to $750. Now, just to relate back on the experience that Deputy Chief Sanders is talking about, you all may recall, for a period of time, the village took a position of strict enforcement on speeding on Mayfield Drive. Remember that? One mile over, it generated a ticket. That was the specific direction of the board. Well, I got specific feedback from the judge about how interested he or she was in prosecuting those tickets or finding those tickets, which was zero. So that's what Deputy Chief Sanders is talking about. Is sometimes we will get feedback from the court saying, these are not the sort of things that are a priority for the court. It's not a decision we make, that's a decision for the court. But we will report that back, and that's what Deputy Chief is talking about.
Good. Any other comments on the noise? I think that if you're blatantly, and I guess it all boils down to intent, if you're trying to be a pain, or if you are being a pain and you know it and you're not fixing the problem, then I think that we drop the hammer on them. But otherwise, we want compliance. Maybe people don't know that their music is that loud, so.
One thing I think I've observed with noise complaints is, since, if it's a defiant party, you may have two or three complaints in the same evening. And I'm not sure that the word of that spreads through the force that quickly, unless the same officer is being called to that location all the time, which has not been what I've seen.
It will, every officer has access to iStatus, which shows the history of the calls during the shift. So on their laptop, it'll have that address. And if it's a repeat, you can go in the history and see, and most of the time, they will.
Perfect. That technology's gotten better then, good.
Any other thoughts on noise? No.
Glad that we have a metric for it, too. That was just gonna be one of my questions. So there's a legal definition of what is disruptive noise and we've got the equipment to measure it.
Okay. We'll move on to fireworks. This one, I actually agree with increasing that. We get.
Is that $25, too? I don't know.
No, it's not. I believe it's 50 and 75.
Well, that changes it for me. I was thinking if it was a $25 ticket, that's not gonna really impact things. But if it's $50, I know that we all receive a lot of complaints about fireworks. Again, we can increase this one up to 750 in court?
That is correct. We also, we discussed this in the past. And it's illegal to possess them also. So, you know, you'd have the noise, and then on top of that, you'd have the unlawful possession of fireworks, which they go to court for. The problem is, you know, the week of July 4th and the month before is crazy. And it'll start in late May and June, and there'll be complaints constantly. And it even runs into July, late July with the complaints. We, to be able to bring someone to court, we have to have a witness that says, he lit that. And he's the one who lit that fireworks, and he's the one who possesses it.
That's for the, for the noise portion. If you go to the house and the fireworks are there, they're in possession of them, correct?
Correct. But that, that would be lucky if we got that.
Okay, I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah. Usually when you get there, they're nowhere to be found.
The reason why I would, I would like this, it is the 50, so I'm fine with that. But the, if this was 25, why I would increase this, this is, I think, vastly different than the other three, because this is, this is more like, this is state law. This is not a Village of Montgomery law that people may not be aware of. I think anybody who lives in Illinois generally knows that you can't have these types of fireworks, so. But we've talked about that one before, so. Any other thoughts on fireworks tonight?
If we could possibly find some ways to make enforcement or prosecution easier. It seems to me that it's a, by and large, it's a backyard crime. And I'm guessing that you would need some reasonable suspicion to even explore the backyard where they're being set off. It's a nighttime crime, so your visibility is diminished. Are there things that we could do that would make a prosecution more likely?
Did you want to speak to that, Dan, or?
Sure. I believe if we, if we stick with the local ordinance and we run it through Steve Anderson's firm, we only need 51%. We need a preponderance of the evidence, which is pretty easy to solve. A state charge, you need 100%.
99.
99, okay.
Beyond a reasonable doubt.
Well, and we did get, I got complaints about people setting them off in the street, which is more observable, but not if you're driving up in a squad car, probably.
The hard part about it isn't so much the burden of proof or the probable cause that you mentioned. It's catching them, catching them in the act. Because guess what? It's happening in the dark in somebody's backyard. Sure, when the officer drives by and hears it or receives a call, but by the time they get back there, oftentimes, kids are smart enough to not be there at that point. It's a difficulty, but it's a difficulty all of us face with all actions of this type. Things that are easy are speeding cases, because the car doesn't get away. But you can get away pretty easily in the backyard on a summer night.
So drones, about $1,200, is it?
That's totally up to your budget.
Would video, with the modern age of cell phones and everyone having a phone, is that admissible evidence? If you were to videotape the guy lighting the firework, is that admissible to then show the officer and say, hey, Tom did it. There he is.
Well, and even.
It is possible. It would have, we would have to establish a valid foundation for the videotape. In other words, the person who did the videotaping would have to testify to a few things to be able to have it be admissible, but yes, in theory, it would be.
And we would like, just, that would help immensely, but we would just take, you know, that you saw it and you're willing to come to court on our behalf and testify that you saw it happen.
That's not gonna happen. I'm not gonna take a day off of work so that you can take somebody to court for a $50 fine. I mean, let's be real about this. Okay, I mean, somebody's gonna take a day off of work to go and testify against their neighbor to get a 75 or 100 or $200 fine. That's just not gonna happen in the real world. It sounds great on paper, but it's not gonna happen. Is anybody, would anybody here do that? I mean, to turn in your neighbor and then go and testify in open court against them? I bet most of the people that call and file a complaint want to do it anonymously.
Correct.
I'd do it if you were my neighbor.
Well, we wouldn't be neighbors for long.
But the reason we're not getting, back to the parking over the sidewalk, the reason we're not getting complaints about that now is because it's not spring or summer. When spring or summer rolls around, we're gonna start getting complaints about it.
And I, I'll, we can do the similar to the snow parking one. If we go to the house, you know, the second or third time, then we'll make it a notice to appear for fireworks. I don't have a problem with that.
Good. There are no other comments? We'll move on from this. Certainly, if you have comments about this, you can bring them up at any time. All right, move on to new or unfinished business. Is there any to come before the board this evening? Yes. All right, Mike, I apologize, because I don't have my email with me. 2376 Stacy Circle?
Yes.
Were you able to find anything out?
Gary Byer and I went out there this afternoon, looked at it. We'll have some warmer weather later this week. But right now, there's ice in those potholes. The question was, are there some pothole repairs needed on Stacy? So the short answer is yes, got that. We'll have it done by the end of the week.
Thank you.
And then we'll continue with the permanent.
Yes, yes. And my bigger concern is that it's right where that drop-off and pickup happens for the school.
Yes.
And somebody's gonna try to avoid the pothole and be paying attention to that. And next thing you know, little Johnny's on the bumpers on his car. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other items? All right, hearing none. You can see the future meetings that we have there. Plan Commission on February 5th. We have the village board meeting on February 9th. Committee of the Hole on the 17th and the rest of the meetings there. Also, we will have the State of the Village address on February 17th at 8:30 in the morning. I would encourage all who are able to attend. Usually a good turnout of that. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the appointment of supplemental legal counsel for the village for collective bargaining pursuant to 5ILCS 120 over 2C1. It's the first time I had to say that one. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz? Trustee Youngerman?
Okay. And I will say to those that are here for the village clerk position, I don't know how long this will take. It probably won't be super long. But if you, nothing will happen from this point moving forward. So if you do leave, you won't miss anything. But I just wanted to say that. And thank you for coming. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That dies for lack of a second.
I defer my motion to Trustee Spurling. I defer my motion to Trustee Spurling. Oh, to Pete, okay.
And for the last time, call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling? Trustee Lee? Trustee Heinz? Trustee Youngerman? I got it right.
Yeah. I didn't want your time to end.
Trustee Marasek?
No. And adjourned. Thank you.